Let's see, who are we missing? Kevin.
Kevin.
I guess we're not starting.
I think it's seven o'clock and I think we're all here. Just as a point of information, I'm letting folks know that our local cable channel is recording this hearing. This is for 83 Boylston Road, a special permit for an in-law apartment. I'd ask the petitioner if he would like to get up and give us a presentation on what he wishes to do.
Lynn, we also need proof of advertisement and letters to the abudders.
Okay, um, proof of advertisements and letters to the abudders, I have all that. And I actually did both papers for...
Oh, great, thank you.
My name is Leanne Larry and I'm the builder hired by Dave.
Do you have a card?
I have his info.
Oh, you do? Okay.
And the plans we have here for the house, those have been designed in-law area, which is the best way to do this, to show, bring that right up here so we can see. So this part of the house here is separated as a future in-law bedroom, bathroom, kitchenette, and sitting room. As far as the square footage, let's see, we are at 694 square feet for the in-law area.
What's the total square footage of the house?
The total of the main house, not including the in-law, is, uh, the first floor is 2878 and there's a partial second floor that is an additional 639 square feet and, sorry, didn't find them, so, and 639 and another 488. As far as...
The math work?
Yeah, it has to be 35 percent.
He's doing it right now.
Four thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine square feet total.
And you take 35 percent of that and that's the maximum size of the...
Yeah, I think he's like half.
Yeah.
He's under a thousand and it's 4,000 square feet, so...
It's 14.7 percent. 14.7 percent. And the location, if you're looking at the front of the house, it's actually situated behind the garage area, so it's not, it doesn't have any, have an appearance of a second, of a second dwelling or anything like that. It's the entry is through the garage or through the main house to get into the, to get into the in-law. There's, there's back, there's back doors, but nothing, nothing street facing or front facing. Uh, do you want me to put this later?
Okay, what's a lot size?
A lot size is four points, I think it's 4.7 acres, 4.69, you know, whatever the...
Four acres plus.
Yeah.
And you understand the limitations of an in-law apartment as to who can live there?
Yeah, it's just my mother-in-law.
Well, if you were to...
And then, like I said, hopefully they have to, let the kids take over the other side.
Right. And you understand that if the board were to grant the special permit, that we granted for five years and it needs to be renewed at that time? The outside facade will give no indication whatsoever that it is a, okay. You mentioned before the hearing started, Board of Health. One of the requirements in here is that we have notification from the Board of Health that they approve of your plans. You have verbal verification?
Yes.
So we could make the special permit subject to final written approval, is...
Yes.
You have no problem with that?
No problem. He actually, yeah, he had us make a change to make sure that it accommodated the in-laws because it doesn't have a second chamber.
Okay. Anyone else have anything that they question?
I do. Will there be, in case of a fire, could the fire truck get into the back? There's...
Get into the, into the back?
To the, where this is built off the very back.
The, actually, let me, let me show you...
That would help.
It is actually pretty wide open here. Here's a overhead view of the lot. Now, this was done away over here, but that's the long driveway that comes up and it's actually come in wider. The in-law itself is situated right here.
Okay.
So there's plenty of room to get around the house and really all directions if need be.
But to get to the in-law, you must go through the main residence? Is that correct?
Yes. There, but right here, there's an, there's a door that goes up to a porch here and there's a second one right here on the, to go to the back deck. So...
So you don't have to go into the...
Yeah, 'cause it's a no separate entrance to get in the, to the actual apartment.
There's a, there's a second separate entrance right behind the, behind this. So if you look at the, you know, this is the front of the house?
Right, yes.
And you see a little edge of that?
Yeah.
You know, that's the, you know, there, the other, the other, yeah, it's right there. So there's a, there's a little porch that's behind it. You just can't see it because it's behind the garage. Right, so the garage is kind of angled like a, you know, I don't know, 30-degree or 40-degree angle. And so then there's an entrance into the other house behind it.
And actually, these stairs right here that come down, so you could actually just come, if they were to park right here?
Yes.
They'd be able to come right around the side of the garage and into, and sort of the in-law right from this direction would actually probably be the closest direct route for them to do it. Let me show you this also.
Okay, thank you.
See, that's how it's situated here. So this is the in-law and there's that door, so they would actually come, that would be the quickest direction.
Does she actually get...
It's required to have a separate entrance in the bylaw.
Yeah, exactly.
So your mother-in-law or whatever, she drives into like the garage, one of these units would be hers?
She could, she could drive into the garage or she'd go in her own front door.
Okay, so literally, if she parked, where else would she park? And she's got to go...
Well, yeah, no, she, I mean, she can go in through the garage.
Okay.
Or she can go in... There's a door in the back of the garage that almost, you just kind of walk across the hallway into, into it, where this one comes into the main house. It's all connected and whatnot, but this would actually be what she would most likely be using.
I think what they're looking at is there any parking outside of the entrance where she could pull up and...
Unload of groceries.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just thinking of...
I know, she's, she's not that frail yet, you know?
Not yet.
Not yet, but yeah, so she's gonna come in.
She caught himself saying yeah.
You know, her father's very old, she's still old, he's around. So, uh, you know, she'd be coming in through here and then into her room, right? You know, I mean, I would probably...
So this is all inside, yeah.
Yeah, once she gets older, I'll give her the first spot.
Oh, that's nice, okay.
You're quite a guy.
But, you know, yeah, that's how, so she could either come in, come in through that way, or she could, you know, if she wanted to, she could come around and do the...
There's a bicycle rack, yeah.
I don't know if the other members farther down want to see this plan. I found it helpful, thank you.
Yeah, so there's the front, you know, this is the little porch, where she can come into the garage.
That's a porch, that's a little porch, that's to the outdoors, yeah.
And this one here is, goes to a deck, and there'll be stairs coming right down here on the side. So, probably there's multiple points to be addressed.
Are you the owner of the land?
Yes.
And this is going to be your primary residence when it's built?
Yes.
And because you understand that that's part of the, and there are limitations as to who could live there, right?
Yeah.
And you understand that?
Yeah.
That if anything, I mean, it's not a full-fledged apartment, it's an in-law apartment.
Right. I think my mother-in-law would be upset if I moved out on her.
I don't know. Everybody comfortable with what we're doing here or...
I'm comfortable.
Yeah? Everybody all set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is, I'll be looking for a motion and if the motion is to approve the special permit, it'll be subject to confirmation from the Board of Health, because we need to have a letter from them that they're happy with the facilities. The petitioner has indicated that he has verbal but not yet written. You're going to provide us with more copies?
I can, absolutely.
And an electronic copy of the plans. We, the building is not built yet, it'll be subject to you inhabiting the house as the owner and the apartment being used by your frail mother-in-law or anyone else that's allowed under the bylaw. We're going to set the terms for five years from recording. Anyone have anything else?
That sounds good.
I might suggest you want to have some kind of a, so she could park the car outside of the door during the good webber, but...
One other item. You have a building permit for this house, correct?
It's pending this...
Okay, so it's pending this. So your building permit's going to be good for two years, if my understanding is correct?
Mm-hmm.
Can we put a clause in there that if he doesn't exercise the building permit within two years, that this is...
Um, we can.
And then I would make that motion.
Okay, so the motion is, I'm taking it to approve the special permit for an in-law apartment at the yet-to-be-built 83 Boylston Road with the following conditions: written confirmation of approval from the Board of Health, that the petitioner is the owner and will occupy the primary residence, and will adhere to the rules for those in the in-law apartment. The permit must be exercised within two years and the permit is good for five years and must be renewed after five years.
So move.
Is that, okay, do we have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll take that as a unanimous...
I'll get that in a minute.
Well, I think since, you know, at one time we didn't limit it to five years, but basically it makes the neighbors happy, you know, because if you have to come back and they say, you know, they have 14 people living in that two rooms, then...
It gives them a chance to...
It gives them a chance to speak up. So, I will, within the week, let's give me a week, give you a written decision. We'll try to get the board members to come down and sign the decision and then you need, it needs to go to the town clerk and then there's like a 20-day, if anyone wants to object to it, and then you're all set.
As far as the copies that I need to drop off of the plans, can I drop it off? Okay. And same with the, with the electronic?
Leanne is just a paper mill, she just...
Okay, great.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay. We have another hearing at eight o'clock.
Sounds like fun.
Or you can go home and watch it on cable, I guess. Okay, I move to close the hearing.
Close, so moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't painful, was it? Do we want to do some other things that we have on the agenda?
Minutes?
You know, save us some time? We have minutes?
Just some minutes.
Kevin, we depend on you for minutes.
Yeah, and thank you to everybody for the minutes for the 20th. And everybody's input, I think I got it right?
I move to accept the minutes of the 20th, it is written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye? All those opposed? We'll take that as a unanimous vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll take that as a unanimous vote. Okay, we have warrants, do we? Okay, so that's... Any unsecured, available? What is the updated zoning map, Leanne?
Yeah, that was from Board of Disessors. I took it around electronically. I do have a hard copy, but it's very small.
Well, no, they want us to approve it?
Yes. Review and approve their updated zoning map.
Well, personally, I think that's the planning board.
Okay.
I mean, I just, I mean, how do you folks feel?
What more can we do?
I need a magnifying glass.
We need to do exceptions too.
I do too.
I need a magnifying...
But electronically, the town changed their email to Gmail and I've lost some previous stuff that I'm trying to recover, so alls I have right now is this hard copy.
I can't, I mean, and I don't even know what to compare it to. They didn't state what they changed, did they?
No, that's all I received.
Okay, no.
Well, is it me, I just don't feel that it's the place of the zoning board to be approving a zoning map.
That's kind of the fox in the kitchen, kitchen, fox in the henhouse.
That's pretty much the pervy of the planning board to...
Yeah, they plan it, we just deal with the exceptions too, right?
Exactly. We just deal with the fallout. Did they ask us to vote on it or...
I believe so. I'm trying to remember what the email said. I think it was something I found in the box, I forwarded it to you, and then they said they had already updated it, but to request the board's review and approval.
Okay, I'm going to ask, entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of an updated zoning map.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? I really don't think, you know, we're in a position to comment on it or...
No, because we really don't know what's, what's what and where is what.
I don't know.
What and where is where.
Sorry, but most of the bounds are, but I can't tell you what you can build there.
I can't even read what the bounds are.
I can't either.
Oh, you got, you're better than I am.
Do we have anything else that we're going to have to do for housekeeping, Leanne?
Oh, the pretty colors.
Nope.
Oh, that is prettier, much prettier, much prettier. They took away all the pretty greens.
Oh, I must have one.
Yeah, it's probably in here.
Is it in here? Yeah, they did difference. Yeah, there's, I don't know what the green is, they took all the agricultural out of it.
I made a note of any changes.
And I don't have a colored printer, so maybe it originally would come in color. I don't have a colored printer.
Yeah. And why not?
I would love, I would love, I have this, I have this old dinosaur printer.
Oh, that's not bad.
That goes like you wouldn't believe, I've been there over a year and never even had to replace the tone.
My word.
Okay, if we don't have any other pressing business, I'll entertain a recess until our eight o'clock hearing, if folks want to do that.
So moved.
Second? It is eight o'clock, it's, I think, close enough.
Seven fifty-nine.
Okay. This is a continuation of a Chapter 43B hearing for 58 South Street requested by Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes, at the last meeting, we had asked that you, or you had been given the report of the consultant and you were going to respond to that and provide us with some other things, which Akira?
I'll turn that over to Sethi as the majority answers and I'll interject whenever I see that you have some additional questions for me.
Okay. I just want to let everyone in the room know that we are being recorded for the local cable channel.
Before we start, the council had requested that I forward a couple of documents I had previously been writing to the board, so I'd like to provide those to her as well as the copies.
And I'm going to ask that you speak as loudly as you can because the speaker is over here next to me and they're probably...
For the record, Sethon, Howard, DeSharmandilis Civil Design Group. With me tonight is Mark Rhodes of the Capes of Berlin LLC. And Mr. Rhodes had asked me to forward over a letter regarding the supplemental water supply today, so I'll provide each of you a hard copy of those.
Thank you.
So at the last meeting, we were provided with a beta group's peer review letter, which we've swanited to, we've incorporated the changes requested by them, as well as given you a reply letter dated October 2nd. I hope you've had a chance to review it and I can go line by line if you'd like, or...
I think the main, the things that you would like to bring to our attention, you should. There were a couple of things that confused me, I don't know if other folks felt the same way. I have a suggestion, could I trouble you to come sit over here, just, you'll be closer to the microphone, or stand there, whatever, just because I know what it's like to be frustrated at home, be unable to hear the folks that are speaking.
No problem. In general, the peer review letters was divided in sections related to zoning bylaw relief, subdivision relief, and then comes based on the utilities for the site. So I'll start with the zoning section. They reviewed our waiver list, we modified that to include zoning bylaw table 320, which essentially mirrors the subdivision regulation that we're already requesting a waiver from, which is to allow more than one principal use on each lot. So we've added that to our cover sheet. Many other things we agreed with. In previous meetings, you had asked us to provide you a tabulation based on current zoning regulations and what we would be proposing, so we've provided that table again in our letter. That was originally provided back in April, and so we've updated that based on the current unit layout. One of the changes we did make, the peer reviewer commented on Lot 2 not having any frontage, so we adjusted the lot layout so that Lot 2 does have frontage now, so they all meet that requirement.
Could you show that on the map, please?
Sure, I'll flip to that particular page, it's on the lot layout sheet.
Well, I would, I don't know how the others feel, but could you explain it in terms of the map that you have up there?
Yeah, why, it's because of the detail, there's a separate page for it.
Okay.
And that's included in the set that was submitted to you. And so Lot 1?
Could I trouble you to stand to the other side and turn that just slightly? Thank you. If you would go over there and just enough so that the folks can see too. That's plenty, thank you.
So we're on Sheet C 201, for those of you that have your own sheet there. So essentially, we have Lot 1 that has frontage here, Lot 2 that has frontage here, and Lot 3 that has frontage here. And what we had proposed is to have each lot be its own entity, they'll each have their own condominium association, we've gone over that prior, so they're responsible for their own utilities. And by doing it this way, there'd be no chance of down the road having the way become an accepted way of the town and therefore the town having to maintain the utilities, snowplow, things like that. That will forever be maintained by the individual associations. Lot 2's frontage is neck here. And then Axis E, you know, provides the, the actual access to each of the lots.
And just for those that are listening, when we say individual frontage, we mean cluster frontage for three units, correct?
Yeah.
And you have three individual condo associations, but you have an umbrella for those three, right?
Correct. And that would be some of the documents that we were talking about. Those would be refined with both Mr. Rhodes' counsel, Town Council, and your input. So we did provide a series of condominium documents, including declaration of trust, master deeds, some restrictions related to the septic system. A lot of the areas in those are blank, they're meant to be filled in for each individual association, and then there's language in there that, that will be adjusted per the board's desires and Town Council's desires.
Thank you.
As long, I'll go back over to that side, is that better for you?
Well, I think it's better for those that are listening to you.
We were asked to adjust or check the turnaround radius, make sure that it was enough for the fire truck. We based our turnaround radius on the 100-foot ladder truck that the town has, and we showed a detail on the plans that allows the truck to move in a continuous forward motion through that circle. The circle that we have shown there is in conformance with the requirements of the subdivision regulations, so that there should not be an issue there. We were asked to provide some additional details on the plan related to lighting, privacy screening, and the earthen berm that we proposed around the site to protect the abutting properties. We added all those details to the plan. And the lighting, we added a detail showing that at, they're very low voltage bulbs, at 15 feet, there's essentially zero light pollution, so that you're not going to have spill over from the site. And we discussed prior that the lighting on the site is to be limited to what's required by the building code, and that note remains on the plan.
So now these new plans are dated 10-2, is that it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There were some comments related to the drainage calculations. All of those have been updated. I have not seen a reply from the peer reviewer, so I'm assuming at this point he's been satisfied. If not, they were all details that can be adjusted to without impacting designs for the sites.
We did test holes out there to back up that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We did test holes out there in the drainage areas. The number of holes that were required by the peer reviewer and all that information was quoted to him. It was 14 feet deep, no groundwater, less than two minutes' oil. Perfectly adequate, as probably as far as there was no response.
And that was a couple, three weeks ago or something?
Correct, thank you. One of the peer reviewers' comments, we originally had the back of the units, we had a specified grass area because of the superior soils of the site, any runoff on that would be infiltrated in that area. He preferred that we provide individual drywells for that back of the unit, so we specified a drywall that's sized to accommodate the runoff from there. So there'll be roof leaders that go into the ground into this structure, and we designated a location for those drywells on each, each structure. Other thing that he commented, that the board should be able to review the stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to construction. We decided to prepare... We decided to prepare a draft of that document now. It's rather lengthy. It's something that will supplement our filing with the EPA that's also made prior to construction. You have that to review. Welcome to comment on it as well as part of that.
Could I just ask, is there any chance that that could change?
There'll be minor changes. The document specifies owners and operators, and the document is actually, the format from the government allows for that to be updated as the construction process goes on. So if a format changes, if any of the emergency contact information changes, that's what you'd see changing there.
You're talking about clerical type things. You're not talking about concrete type things.
Procedurally, no. The, what's put in place for that site will remain through the construction period on that. And part of what the peer reviewer asked us to do is incorporate an erosion and sediment control plan. Normally, when you have wetlands and topography, that's a little bit more of a complicated task. We don't have that here. We have about a two-foot grade change through the construction area. So we've specified some protections at the perimeter of the site. We specified a temporary construction area, so that'll prevent any sediment from being tracked onto South Street. And then we also have a temporary sediment basin. Very unlikely that that would be needed at the site, but we designated an area, so if that does have to happen, we have that. And that's one of the new sheets that was incorporated in your plan set. That also specifies basic construction sequencing as well. Some clerical things to the stormwater operation and maintenance manual that the peer reviewer asked. We provided those. And then utility-wise, include a condition that prohibits the use of kitchen grinders. That's something that's not allowed in this town. We've not asked for that waiver, and the septic systems are not designed for that, so we have no problem with that condition. There will be no garbage grinders in these units.
That falls into the deed restriction as well as the bedroom.
Again, I can't hear you.
That falls into the deed restriction as well as the bedroom restriction. It goes into the septic documents.
One of the big new sheets, the peer reviewer asked us to provide construction-level details of the cisterns. We have incorporated a full construction plan for the cisterns that was endorsed by our fire protection engineer, and it meets the requirements specified in the supplement.
By whose fire prevention engineer? Someone on your team?
Correct, yes, someone retained by Mr. Rhodes.
And then, just, it's not anybody. Just called them up and gave them the plans, and he reviewed them, and... But they meet the, the bylaw, and they meet the, the...
We've, we've touched on it before. There's some very specific pieces that are requested from your bylaw. Those are all on there. Need to review those.
What plan is that endorsement on?
That is on, I can just look at my title sheet quick.
C four oh two.
Thank you.
What was it?
C four oh two.
And then the board had asked us to consider realigning Unit One, so we twisted that ninety degrees. We've given the option to be either way that you want. The plan now shows a dash box for where it'll be if it is aligned along South Street as you requested.
What page is that on?
That is reflected on many of them, probably the best one.
All right, is this, when I'm looking at C five oh one, I see...
It's, it's actually called out on one of the sheets as well. And in our written response, we've indicated that we defer to you to...
That was from Kevin's comments, the state, that we've turned that first one to...
Yeah, I, I think they were talking about more than one, but...
Well, actually, the letter from the state proving it said that it was your plan to have the, the first house fronting on South Street.
Correct.
Yeah, we, we defer to the board. It can be either way, whatever you feel is more appropriate for the site. One of the things you asked us to consider too is a five-foot wide sidewalk. So we've shown an optional five-foot wide sidewalk with a three-foot shoulder, and that's entirely located within the extents of the previously proposed Axis E two. And we defer to the board if they would desire to have a sidewalk along the length of the driveway.
You've deferred to whom?
You.
And it goes up to, but not around the cul-de-sac, correct?
Correct. Those were the bulk of the plan changes. If I can address anything specific, I'd be happy to do so.
Does anyone on the board have questions about...
All kinds.
Okay.
Just going through, these are pretty petty stuff. Just that school bus little area there, just a gravel, little section where the kids stand. That's just gravel on the ground?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no lean-to type building?
There's nothing there. It's just an open space ground. I know we had discussed an enclosure before. That's why...
Can you think of a subdivision in town that has...
I'm not, I'm just saying, we did discuss an enclosure before. I'm not going through.
I was under the impression that it was a shelter.
Yes, thank you. We were all under that impression.
Are you opposed to any type of shelter? I'm not opposed to a shelter. I would prefer to see if there's a desire, if there was a need for a shelter. If a need for a shelter, like at Green Acres, we proposed three thousand dollars to build a shelter if there was a place that one could be built. But there has been no place for one to be built, so it never got, never happened. We do currently, here we own the property where one could be added. If it turns out I could have to own three thousand dollars, then if there is a need for that building to be erected...
Well, what happened at Green Acres? Because I thought that was on the plan and that was part of the approved plan.
No, it was, we proposed three thousand dollars to build a shelter at the end of Dudley Road if the town was able to acquire an area to place one.
Okay, so on this, going back to this one here, this would be something that you would consider? A shelter on that grass, on the gravel easement?
If there was a need, I, I would, if there was a need.
Define a need. How are you going to determine?
Do you want to have a number of school-aged children residing in there at the time? Say, everyone that buys these are retirees.
Which is not going to happen.
We're getting about thirty percent, and nobody, at Green Acres, we've got maybe half a dozen, between Green Acres and Berman Woods, we have about half a dozen kids.
This is not a major thing that we have to battle on for hours here. Just, would you consider it later?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, also, you've added fencing, and I saw this planting, so you've got some shrubs and some azaleas and whatnot along the edge. Does that come under the master association that you would, someone maintains those under that? In other words, if the drought next year and all your pines and your azaleas die, does the master association take care of that for replacement?
Anything within the easement for the roadway, driveway, whatever good label we call it, falls under the master association. Anything around the perimeter on the lot lines, I could do a, a one-year warranty on, a one- or two-year warranty on any screen that dies within that time period. But, but meeting with a lot of the abutters, we have a buffer strip around the property, and we have substantially large trees surrounding the property that it doesn't make sense to cut them down to plant smaller trees, so...
You've got a natural barrier that's just going to be natural out there. You also have a fence you're putting up.
Correct, correct.
So the fence is under the master plan?
Yes.
So, you know, five years down the road, when it all falls over, it will be taken care of through the master plan?
The vinyl won't fall down.
Okay, but it will be taken care of under the master deed, for the master unit umbrella.
We can write that in, yeah.
Okay.
And that's a great easement for it.
Okay, so someone will take care of it?
Yep.
Ad infinitum, whatever.
Yeah, you guys can make that a condition.
Okay. These houses too, again, it's like a condo association, right?
Correct.
So this little group, does someone come in and take care of all the lawns? Or each individual unit takes care of their own property?
Each individual unit takes care of their own lawn.
Are these units allowed to put in sprinkler systems?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so the sprinkler systems are, again, are an optional thing on all the houses. I'm just thinking of eventually what drains off these wells in this area. So every house can have a sprinkler system?
At this point, it's two we determined. The, the sprinkler systems, they're going to draw some water, but at the same time, you know, I guess they're allowed to have a sprinkler.
They are allowed to have them under their, under their condo association.
Yes, correct.
This is the condition that, these are conditions that you, the board, can...
Yes, exactly. So right now, they're allowed.
It says that the, right now, the condition in the draft conditions I have that the condominium documents shall provide that the management of lawn areas shall be by the condominium association.
Okay.
Not by the individual owners. I don't think you want it by the individual owners in a condominium.
Thank you, yeah. And again, just under, because you do have drain off, and this is such a tight area.
Yeah.
Are they, we are a green community. Are they allowed to use fertilizers and, like, herbicides? It's prohibited in there? Thank you.
All fertilizers?
Pesticides and fertilizers is recommended by Healthy Lawns for Healthy Families Program.
Thank you, okay. Okay. The other one that I have a question on would be more towards Town Council. If, like on Green Acres, you kind of developed it as it went, the units got sold, and you developed it. On this one, are there any restrictions that you could put in through mass housing that if you sell X amount of units, then you have to sell or put up for sale one of the low-income housing units?
It goes, it's already in place. It's a...
It's already said in...
This is not a phased development. The process is phased.
So he, this has to happen, so this conversation wouldn't happen again?
Well, he could only maybe build four units, but one of them would have to be...
Has to be at that point, okay. And I guess my other, the wells I'll bring up later, but I think the other elephant in the room is going to be that U five about the fire and the cisterns and the sprinkler systems. I did read your letter, and it asks, you request that we, the zoning board of appeals, serves as the granting authority for the cisterns as opposed to the water sprinklers, right?
Correct.
That, to me, is something that still should have been discussed with the fire department, and we have requested that since April or May, and it still hasn't happened.
We have letters from the fire department stating that they will accept nothing but sprinklers.
But you still haven't discussed it with anyone.
When you get the letter and you have several weeks...
Could you speak up, please, for those that...
When you have a letter from the fire chief that says he'll accept nothing but sprinkler systems...
Oh, I'm not a public safety official, so I'm not sure how to deal with this.
I'm not, I'm proposing a cistern, so that's up to you, the board, to decide how to handle that.
So that's one of the conditions, or, okay.
It's a waiver that, that needs to be voted on eventually, yeah.
Okay. And the other thing again is the neighbors' wells. Again, even if there's not blasting or anything, you are not agreeable to checking on them before and after this development?
Your hired expert, Bill Burkings, who's worked for this town for almost thirty years, he has...
I heard Mr. Burkings. I was here, yeah.
He pretty much put that to rest.
And I'm still asking, you wouldn't consider it?
No.
Okay.
Because he said all their wells are...
I heard, I was here.
The zoning board of appeals didn't hire him.
No, he just came and made a statement.
He was not a hired expert.
No, he was not a hired...
I want to clarify that for the record that he was not a hired expert.
Any shallow wells are...
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I want to clarify that he was not a hired expert for, he was not the zoning board of appeals hired expert.
Right.
The zoning board of appeals hired Beta Group to do a peer review, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. So those are my first initial ones.
Anyone else?
I just have one item. On the original Beta review, Stormwater Item Five, was the recommendation each house had the runoff recharge system?
Correct.
And we decided by drawing this into the plan. On Beta's second review of that, they're saying the drywells are sized for fourteen hundred square feet, but your building envelopes indicate that the plans are twenty-eight hundred square foot.
I, I'm sorry, I never saw a reply from Beta, I wasn't provided that, but I can answer that still. The drainage calculations account for the front half of each house being collected by the infiltration system in the street, the catch basins. So that'll be infiltrated that way, and then the...
Okay, so your drywells only, you're only doing the backdocks?
Correct, correct.
That should cover, so you're twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, you didn't get the October third letter?
I did not.
Oh.
I have one here, actually, extra, if you like it.
I wasn't aware there was one.
So there was a comment earlier that Beta did not respond to something. What was that?
I, this is the first time I've seen.
Right, but what was the comment? What was it regarding?
I have, I haven't...
What was the subject matter that you were, was in question?
I hadn't received.
Oh, that was the, the testles and where the drainage...
So you might want to look, look at that first.
The testles that we did for the, called that, um, stuff. Yeah, Beta accepted the other item, concurred with it.
I don't really see anything that he says isn't resolved in here.
Yeah, I think the one she's referring to is the Stormwater Three and Stormwater Four, which Beta has, saying the soils information provided and the issues is resolved.
Okay, and the only one is the Stormwater Five, which we, we just addressed there.
Okay, anyone else have questions, comments? Is there anyone in, I'm sorry?
I am still, would like to see something other than what the Berlin Fire Department has said, and what you're saying is get together with them and come up with the yes or no answers. It's not required by law by the state.
Excuse me, do you really mean that to be your answer?
That's...
I, I understand it may not be required by law, but, I mean, Berlin kind of does things...
Berlin has also said that there's non-substantial water supply in the near area to put out a fire, so when the sprinklers go off and, well, what, what would you use for water to put out the rest of the home?
The cistern does provide a benefit to surrounding properties too, and Mr. Rhodes pointed out in his letter that he's willing to grant the town an easement so that that could be accessed to, be used for surrounding properties. So therefore, you'd have an area that currently does not have fire protection that, that would benefit the abutting properties. And that's, this is going to be a privately developed cistern as well, so it's not the taxpayers' money that's doing that.
And also regards to that bond, you want that waived?
Yeah, because the property is going to want to maintain it.
What is the problem with just keeping the bond there for five years?
There's no jurisdiction. There's no, what, I could throw a five thousand dollar bond there, but...
Then that wouldn't be a problem?
No, we'll throw a five thousand, throw a five thousand dollar bond in an account and make sure that they still work in five years, and...
Mm-hmm.
But they're going to, the documents are going to be drafted. The homeowners association is going to make sure that they're working for an entirety, not just...
Just like a Christmas club, so not a problem.
Okay.
Anyone else? If not, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, ask questions, say anything? anything? Mr. Andrew, I'd ask maybe that you come up beside here, just so the folks can hear you.
Um, the Board of Selectmen has, uh, issued another memorandum, it's an elaboration of the memorandum that we supplied in June, that goes into a little more detail regarding the, uh, the issues, and particularly the public policy issues. I submitted this to the chairman and to counsel in soft copy earlier this afternoon, and I have copies for the board and for the...
I did have, there's two there.
Okay.
Nice of you to share.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Oh, it's the last one.
I'm sorry?
I was just generalizing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm not, you know, we've spoken about this quite a bit, and this memorandum deals with more of the broader public policy issues that we think are raised by this. Uh, the history of this project is, um, is well-known. Um, the, uh, the town was attempting to acquire this land for recreational space. Uh, when that failed at an annual town meeting, Mr. Rhodes stepped in and preempted the town's interest on this. Um, everybody also knows where we stand in terms of affordable housing and affordable housing need, and what we have in the pipeline, and what we have now proceeding finally at, at River Bridge. Um, in short, the Board of Selectmen really feel that this is, uh, close to a misuse of the provisions of, uh, of forty B, when viewed in terms of the context of it and the public policy. Um, we see no reason why the town should move to accommodate this project to be justified by public policy. Um, and so, therefore, we would, uh, we would urge you to, um, fully address any local, you know, or neighborhood concerns. Um, and again, to, to view this in, you know, in the context, it adds just a little bit to our housing stock, an amount that frankly, in terms of the housing production plan and what we expect to happen, is, is not necessary. It wrecks considerable damage on the interests of the town and that recreational land. It, uh, I think wrecks considerable damage to, uh, to that neighborhood. So, we would, uh, we would urge you to, uh, support the suggestion of the local board of health, that the waivers to the local bylaw not be allowed. Um, we would also support a condition that, uh, the applicant would be required to take measures to ensure that any affordable units are guaranteed in perpetuity, because, uh, to allow this to be built and have those slip out and not have assurance would frankly, to my mind, be adding insult to what is already injury to the town with respect to this. Um, we would also urge that, given the history that we have with this applicant, with the Green Acres, that you consider, um, adding a provision to the comprehensive permit, that any alteration to this would be viewed as a new application, um, because we, uh, you know, we, we've seen what, what happens with this applicant. Um, I would remind everybody that the town has been historically, um, very welcome to the idea of affordable housing, and the, um, progress that we have made, uh, over the last ten or fifteen years with respect to it has been significant. We have shown ourselves open to lips. Uh, we would be willing to consider some considerably different configuration of the use of this land, and even consider, uh, you know, approaching it as, as a lip, but this project, in this configuration, in this context, we do not feel is worthy of any kind of significant accommodation. Um, no talks in more detail, but, um, I know we've all talked about this a lot, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you.
If the town should move to accommodate twelve houses, then why are they gonna move to accommodate two-hundred-five apartments?
Why, I missed the last part of that.
Why are they gonna move to accommodate two-hundred-five apartments? River Bridge.
I think it's because, well, me personally, why would I support that? Not saying that I don't support this.
We're talking about the need for affordable housing.
Because that provides affordable housing.
Yeah, well, I...
Yeah. And it's the amount of space available. I'm sorry?
It was stated that the, the need for it is not great enough.
We're very close to the ten percent.
Until the two thousand twenty census.
You think that's gonna make a major difference?
Huge difference, but why would, why would you want two-hundred-five apartments and have more police and more fire, and, and they, they appraised them at a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars per unit?
But those have already been approved.
I understand they've been approved, but they haven't been, they've been approved, but they, they haven't come on the books yet until they have a foundation permit. So, those aren't even in the picture. Those are, those haven't, those, those have been in the works for ten years, you know, so we keep dredging up the passage of all the apartments. They finally found somebody to flip them to, they were supposed to be built before the hotel, and they weren't. Uh, the town's been sold, uh, you know, uh, a carrot for the longest time, and, uh...
Well, I, I'd refrain from disparaging any other project other than its value for affordable housing.
Okay, I'm done.
Just as, just as, you know, we look at yours...
Sure.
In the whole scope, only as the number of units that we have.
I'm only, I'm here under the statute, I'm here under the, what I'm here to, to be able to do by right and by law, and we've made our presentation, and if anybody else chooses to speak, they choose to speak, and we can move on.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to, please state your name and address?
Hi, James Concan, Seventy-Ninth South Street.
And thank you for coming down close, because the microphone's here.
I would just like to revisit the freshwater, uh, category for just a moment, please, on behalf of the neighbors that are in the room. Um, I believe that perhaps Mr. Rhodes, I'd ask him to reconsider just testing our wells, paying for the testing of wells, and if we should have contamination because of runoff from this project, uh, perhaps the board, if they're gonna go ahead with permitting, would look at, um, requiring a charity bond for a certain amount of time that would cover it if there's a problem down the road. I'm not really interested in going after a condominium association down the road after the fact. Um, I think if, if the, the size of the project is, uh, mainly the reason why they could be run, um, then I believe the builder should, should be, should be the one that holds relief.
How many wells, how many wells are in this radius that we're talking about?
I'm looking at the direct neighbors outside your project, mainly downhill from your project.
Three neighbors, four neighbors?
Um, there's four, there's five neighbors in the room.
Five neighbors.
There's Travis, who's on...
Contested prior to construction, the only thing that you, well, you're, it's a double-edged sword, is, well, if I test your wells at that point, and there's problems with them prior, then that's on you, and you'll have to correct your own situation. So, I could test pre-construction, and for those five neighbors, I'll test after construction. But, uh, like the Brooklyn State said, any shallow wells that are pre-existing non-conforming...
They're not non-compliant.
They're grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in, they are not non-compliant.
Okay, fine.
I personally have lived across from the much smaller development that did change the runoff in topography, and there were problems down the road with, uh, the water drained into our property, uh, which was not on the well, so it wasn't as vital, but it's just something...
You can list the five wells, we'll do a pre-construction, and we'll do it, uh, after construction completion.
We need the list of wells for our condition.
Okay.
Who are you?
I'll have them in the letter, Chris.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you accept that? Thank you.
Yeah. Um, Leanne needs a copy of this.
Yeah, we're gonna, well, we're all gonna need a copy of that. So, am I understanding correctly, Mr. Rhodes, that you're willing, if the principals involved want it, that you will test their wells?
Correct.
For what?
The regular standard of, uh, the town and the, the show of the board of health, the, uh...
For volume and quality?
Volume is, you could test volume and quality, but, uh, volume with a shallow dug well depends strictly on the amount of rainfall, so, but...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, you're willing to...
We'll test for volume and qua...
Volume and quality before and wha...
We'll wait after.
If the, if the, um, individual wants it.
Wants it.
In other words, we can't impose on anyone something they don't want, for the reasons that you perhaps cited.
They would have to give me permission in order to do so.
And have a bond as well.
Yeah.
Hmm. Okay, the bond, I'll...
As long as the bond is a reasonable, uh...
I'm sure it will be.
Reasonable.
Well, what do you consider reasonable?
We have five wells, thirty-five grand. That's about five thousand.
Would you pass this down to Leanne? Before you leave, could we make copies of that, Does anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Tricia Concan.
Could you come, I'm, could I drop you to come down?
Seventy-Ninth South Street.
You just won't make your, a star on TV here.
I was just gonna say, um, from a layman's point of view, the, um, the, I was concerned about the wells, but I'm also concerned about the fire. Um, I, I really believe that Mr. Rhodes should put in, um, something that the local fire department thinks is safe. And I happen to be married to a firefighter, I don't know a ton about fires, but I know that, that amount of housing on that small amount of land in close proximity in our neighborhood, if they catch on fire and they can't put them out, that that means that other houses are gonna go up in fire, up in flame. And, um, especially what's happening in California right now, I think this is, you know, this puts it more, um, makes it more of a point of having the proper sprinkler systems, if you're gonna have just that little bit amount of, you know, that amount of housing in that, that small an area. And I think the other thing is, too, I, I also believe that three affordable housing, housing units is, isn't gonna make a huge difference, and I don't believe that that is why he is building the property. I mean, I don't personally believe that, so, you know, that's all I want to say. It's my opinion.
Right now, in its current condition, if that land was to catch fire, it would burn down more houses than it would if houses were there. After we clear the land, and we have the buffer area, and we have the houses that are in place, and the cistern that's there for water supply to put out fires, and we have grass lawns which are maintained and mowed right now, in its existing condition, we could have a fresh fire like we have over in California. So, right now, it's uns safer than it is, uh, redevelopment, than it would be posted on the...
But you don't have the electricity, you don't have the people over there, I, I don't believe that for a second.
New houses don't catch fire, I see old houses that catch fire.
New houses can burn to the ground just as easily as old houses. Are you a trained firefighter? Then how do you know?
New houses don't catch fire.
All right, let's not get into any bantering, you both have an opportunity to speak.
I'm just saying, that's my opinion, that, that I believe that it should comply with the local fire department, that's all I want to say.
We are complying with the local fire department, with the cistern regulation, which is the bylaws, it's written by the town, which is in the...
No, but the, I think the fire chief, the, the acting fire chief would like you to have sprinklers.
I understand that.
So, I think that's complying with the local fire department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, come on down.
Okay. I'm Dennis Rennick at Fifty-four South Street in Berlin, and, um, I appreciate Mr. Andrew said, I think he's right on, but I would like to make some observations of my own. Throughout this process, all I heard Mr. Rhodes say is that this is the law, not what the town bylaws are, not what the town officials say, but he quotes other people. The terms of a plan of record, I'm still sitting here on October eleventh, still hearing, well, I'll make this happen, I'll make, it wasn't part of the plans. This far into a project, to have this many open issues, and say, I'm gonna take care of it later, when it happens, we'll fix it, we'll do this, we'll do that. After April through October, we're still bantering, not me bantering, I'm talking about the town officials. This is, this is unreasonable behavior in terms of an applicant to a town. And in fact, what I've seen is disrespect shown just to this board, to the town officials, on a regular basis by Mr. Rhodes, the applicant. And I'm saying, this is like, really unreasonable. So, basically, what I'm saying is, I've seen letters from all of the boards, and I don't see any of them saying this is something great for the town. And I've heard from the very beginning, this doesn't have to be a forty B. Mr. Andrew said it many, more, more than one time, in writing, presented tonight to the board. So, from a town perspective and the culture of that area, to be changed dramatically, with all of these borderline, well, we can make this happen right here, we got three feet over here, it's gonna work, we'll put this in, and it'll work. From a town perspective, to ruin that part of the town for, and with this kind of conversation to the boards, it's just unacceptable for me, as a town person. I don't think it respects the town people or the boards of the town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Come on
Steve Litchwell, Berlin Fire Department. Uh, just for the record, we've had no communications or meetings with, uh, Mr. Rhodes about this matter. Um, this does fall under our regular bylaw, under the supplemental water supply, and under the general regulations, it says there is two options, a cistern or a residential sprinkler system, and that is to be defined by the fire chief. So, in this case, the fire chief has determined that, in his opinion, that we should have residential sprinklers in the system, uh, for these, uh, residential homes. Um, if a cistern is proposed, in the gen, in the regulation as well, it says that, has to be approved by the fire chief. So, for his amendment to make the board be the approval, or have the approval process, it falls right in our bylaws, that it's supposed to be the fire chief. We took some, uh, serious thought in, uh, looking at this project, looking at the plans close proximity, and we felt the best course of action for our town, um, was residential sprinklers, because we're not gonna have early warning, uh, for our volunteers. Uh, we only have two full-time day people, so for something that happened in the middle of night, at least the fire sprinklers will have a good jump on the system, uh, in the, in the event of a fire. Um, and the chief feels that the cistern would not be a viable system to use. They've been unreliable, we're, we've been having problems with those, even on our commercial properties. Uh, they're, they're failing, they're leaking, they're constantly maintaining them. Uh, we have a couple of different commercial properties We have a couple of different commercial properties throughout the town. The day, a school down at the Rotary, they've only been there a couple of years. They've had to go in and repair their systems. We've been working with some of the new developers, they're changing their alternatives to steel tanks and fiberglass tanks, because concrete tanks are porous and they have a tendency to leak, and they're not reliable. And all those properties are using those tanks as sprinkler systems for their property, which is required.
That's 'cause what your bylaw asks for.
Excuse me?
Their bylaw asks for concrete tanks to be sealed.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? If not, I would maybe ask Amy what our options are and how she sees us going forward from here.
So, I went through the entire file that I had, and there's, from what I can tell, there's two, there's two major problems with the proposal that we have right now in front of us. There are, there are three requirements that an applicant has to meet in order to qualify for a 40B project. They have to be a limited liability company, they have to have a funding source, and they have to have site control. And this...
What was the last one?
Site control.
Site control.
This applicant has the first two, there's, they are a limited liability company.
We have all three.
They have a, they are, they have a funding source. And apparently, there's a purchase and sale agreement, but we've never seen it.
It exists.
We don't have a copy of it, and so therefore, we can't determine if there's site control or not.
I was, if you guys have been sent a purchase...
Excuse me?
So, we don't have, I don't have a copy of it, so, I don't, we have not seen it. The application that I have did not come with it, the project eligibility letter did not come with it, the site application for project, site approval application did not have it. And so, we would need a copy of that. And then the second, the second very, for lack of a better term, large issue that I spotted is the fact that this property is going to be subdivided into three lots, three separate lots. There's been no discussion as to how the lots will be subdivided, whether they'll be subdivided with an A and R plan, whether they'll be subdivided by a subdivision, there's been no waiver requests regarding any subdivision. So, technically, what they're proposing cannot happen, because they cannot subdivide these lots without either a subdivision or an A and R plan. And neither one has been requested, there's been no waivers, so, it's, it's step number one that hasn't been proposed. All of the other steps have been proposed, but not that step.
Could I just ask you, Mr. Rhodes, to respond to those on the time? First of all, do you have a purchase?
Yes.
Do you have a purchase and sale agreement?
Yes.
Why wasn't that part of your petition?
It's, you can't get site eligibility without...
I can't hear you.
You can't get site eligibility from the state without its control of the site, so that already exists.
However, and that is correct, but his, his project eligibility letter is dated in February. We don't know if that...
If it's expired.
If it's expired, we have no idea. We do not have a copy of that purchase and sale agreement.
I own the land.
The land is owned by Rhodes Construction Incorporated.
Correct.
The applicant is the Capes at Berlin LLC. Therefore, there needs to be a purchase and sale agreement. In fact, the purchase, the, the project eligibility letter states that there has to be a P and S. So, there needs to be one, we don't have a copy of it.
One exists. It's been forwarded here in the past, we can get it to you.
Hold on. I have never seen a purchase and sale agreement. Are you telling me you sent us one?
We send multiple stuff to the town.
Well, when you, no, no, I'm not talking about the town, I'm talking about the Chapter 40B hearing.
Correct.
Have you sent to either council, this board, or Leanne?
Personally, I have not. I don't know if Kristin or Seth have, but it's been, it was provided with the mass housing application, and it's a requirement of the mass housing application in order to get...
But we're not mass housing.
I understand that. But it, but if mass housing cannot give eligibility without it being in existence.
He is correct, however, the eligibility was in February. It's now off.
A purchase and seal has a finite time in it. So, we need to see the document in order to know what that finite time is.
You can make that a condition over here.
We cannot, you cannot make a determination without those three, without those three items, and you cannot make a determination unless you know that there is site control.
Would you care to address the others?
What was the next one?
Subdivision for C and R, we have our zoning waivers on the cover letter, consistent with prior ways the board has done this, and we have frontage on a way for each lot now.
But you do not have adequate frontage.
And we've asked for a waiver for the frontage.
But you, you are going into, you're gonna go in, you, you still need to be able to subdivide the property. So, you're going, you're asking for a waiver from the frontage requirement.
Correct.
But you still have to get an A and R plan.
Correct.
So, you cannot get an A and R plan with a frontage waiver. You have to get a waiver from the A and R plan.
I'll defer to you, this is consistent with the last two A and R, or subdivisions that the board has endorsed this way.
And they were required.
Excuse me, you know, could I just interject here? Times change. I can remember when you didn't have to have a smoke detector in your house, and then they came into being. I don't want you to assume that any mistake, if it was a mistake, or any missed opportunity in the past means that we aren't gonna do it now. I mean, I, I guess I get a little irritated when you say, well, when we did, you know, this one or we did that one, we didn't have to do this, but we're asking...
No, no, we actually, the last time, the both of them, you guys wrote the decision, we produced a recordable plan, that was an A and R plan, and it was signed and endorsed by the board.
And how many of...
There had to be a waiver request for that.
Mm-hmm.
And there's not one, there's no waiver request listed, and there's actually, and there's no plan, there's no draft plan provided that, I didn't see it, I didn't see a draft A and R plan.
You have a lot layout plan endorsed by a professional answer there and there.
And there, no, are there signatures? It's a, it's a plan, it is in here?
Yes.
Which, which sheet is that?
You'll go to sheet C 201, and it has signature blocks of the board on it.
So, you are asking for an A and R?
Correct.
So, you do need a waiver, because you can't...
If that's your interpretation, forgive me, council, I, I respect your opinion on it. It's just different than it's been done before, and that's not, I'm not, I, I wanna work with you on that, and so, we need to request that waiver. We're happy to do so as a condition.
I, I also would change that language too. Do you always put that language in place of the planning board per, and you don't put any language provide, you don't put any language regarding 41?
We do not, no.
Oh, okay. I, I would put four, because then how does the registry take it if they don't have Chapter 41 on it?
Uh, they've accepted it in the...
Yeah, accepted it in the down, sure.
And Worcester Registry is very thorough.
That's a minor detail, but I, I still think that there should be a waiver regarding chapter, regarding the A and R.
We're open to council's, council's language, and that could be provided as a final mylar for getting to that point.
This is the last night, so, you know, for the hearing.
This is the last night, and we do not have a purchase and sale agreement, so, I, I think it's a major, it's a major problem.
Okay.
That is a major problem, that we don't have that, so...
Mark is the sole entity of both properties, providing self with P and S right now if the board desires.
I could, I'll write myself one right now and, and write in and hand it to you.
And then we could, we could check with mass housing and make sure it's the same one that he provided to mass housing, because it has to be the same one, so, if it's not, then there would be a problem with, mass housing would probably have a problem with that too.
I see what you're saying, yes.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure that that would be a good idea, but that would be up to him. I could go, I could keep going, but that is...
Please do.
That is, that is a, a major...
We extend it till tomorrow, I could produce that P and S for you guys tomorrow?
We can't, we, unless the board's meeting tomorrow, because the board has to vote to close, so...
I know at least two of us have other meetings tomorrow. Four, me, me two, me three.
So, I noticed on the plans that there are two, two-bedroom houses and ten three-bedroom houses. Those will be, we will memorialize that in the decision.
If you only have two two-bedroom, how do you divide that up between market and low and moderate?
One would have to be affordable and one would have to be more good.
One of the two bedrooms?
Yeah.
Yep. The, the board needs to make a decision on the orientation of the house on South Street, and if they want it fronting on South Street or not fronting on South Street. And so, that's a decision that the board has to make.
I find it hard to try to envision it, because again, what the petitioner has done is put blocks in. I mean, I don't know where the driveway would go, or, like, I see the renderings of the house, and I can't really kinda picture that house sideways.
The driveway would stay the same, it would just be a side load garage on that one.
Other details that the board has to work out, once we close the hearing, there's details that the board has to work out regarding the construction phasing. When, when does the board want to have the pre-construction meeting, things like that? Thirty days ahead of time, sixty days ahead of time, all, all these kind of issues will come up. These are all in the draft decision that I sent, that I, that I forwarded to you. The, with regard to the, with regard to the housing section on this, we do have a, we do have a springing affordability clause, so, once the affordability regu, once the regulatory agreement, affordability provision expires, the town's affordability clause would then kick in, and that would hopefully keep the unit affordable in perpetuity.
Let's keep going, sir.
And...
Never mind.
Just let her finish.
Is the, I have not been to the property since April. Is the structure still there? So, one of the things is, the demolition of that structure would be the commencement of construction. And so, we wanna keep that in mind when we do all of our construction sequencing. And we went through the wells already. The, with regard to the waivers, I have a lot of comments on the waivers. They are requesting, they are requesting numerous waivers that are not required, and I suggest the board not grant waivers that are not required. Therefore, so there's more than one principal use to be established on a lot. The entire project is residential, so, I, I suggest that we do not grant a waiver from that requirement, because there is nothing else presented to this board other than residential. With regard to the dimensional requirements, we have the minimum lot area of eighty thousand square feet, yet all three lots, lots one, two, and three, all exceed eighty thousand square feet. So, again, I don't know why there would be a waiver request for that. Minimum lot width, for lot one, it says a hundred and two feet, which meets that, so I don't know why there's a waiver request for that. For other waiver requests, for minimum front yard, these are gonna be a little bit more difficult. We have to, we have to get a little bit more detailed with these, which is going to be hard, because the plans are somewhat conceptual, which is allowed in the 40B procedure. They are allowed to submit plans that do not show the exact houses. But for minimum front yard, it appears that the front yard provided between unit one and South Street right of way actually does meet the minimum front yard, so we don't need a waiver for that. And then, the minimum rear yard, it says forty feet provided between rear of units and a budding property is not owned by Capes of Berlin LLC. I don't know what that means. I'm assuming that means that they meet the forty feet, so they do not need a waiver from the minimum, from the minimum rear yard. And again, minimum green area, it appears that all three lots meet the seventy percent, so they do not need a waiver from that. And so, again, I suggest not granting waivers when they don't meet them. So, and then I did not, I was not able to open the plans electronically that Seth had sent, so, I know that the waivers that he has on the new plans are different from the list of waivers that I have in Exhibit C. He has additional waivers, so I do still, I still need to go over those, the new ones, but that's what I have so far.
Did you wanna make a comment?
No, it's not, but anyway. If, would town council like to take a minute to go through the new waiver list to see what the new waivers are?
Well, I think she'd probably wanna spend more than two minutes. Kevin?
Well, I had a number of things, but I thought we were collecting things from the hearing, and then we'd discuss this relative to our application and decision.
Yes.
Or we can, I can bring them up here, because they seem all to fit in with some of the things that are going on.
You have an opportunity to say something if you wish, Kevin.
Okay. And this is relating the information that we had developed during the hearing, and trying to put in perspective relative to what is going on, okay? And the first one, we've made references to the, the information from mass housing and from the selectmen. The one issue, in February 13th, 2017, letter from Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, which is the official title of Mass Housing Finance Agency, the Board of Selectmen submitted comments regarding the application on January 5th, 2017, and this is from the, the state letter. The following concerns were identified in their comments. The municipality is concerned with the density proposed for this development. It's dramatic variation from the intensity of lot utilization found in the adjacent neighborhood. On page two, the letter from the state, says, "The following issues should be addressed in your application to the Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals, and you should be prepared to explore them more fully during the public hearing process. The applicant should be prepared to respond to the municipal concerns relative to the overall density of the application." And that's in the direction. Now, this comes about because in your application to the state for the 40B, huh, there, in the Smart Growth Criteria Scorecard section of the application for the 40B, the developer self-assessment, on page two, it says, "You're going to use method two per the Smart Growth Guidelines. Development meets a minimum of five of the Commonwealth's ten sustainable development principles as shown in the next section below." The first one is concentrate development, and you, under that, you checked off higher density than surrounding area. I think everyone agreed that, okay? But the second one is restore and enhance the environment. And under that, you checked off open space or passive recreational facilities. And I think that's the thing that a lot of people are talking about here. Now, in addressing this during the hearings, you did address it by saying you have like open space in it. Now, in addressing this during the hearings, you did address it by saying you have like, open space in it, right? But the real question was restore and enhance the environment. Now, there's nothing restoring the environment, because it's rather pristine, okay? But to enhance the environment, what we're saying here is that during the hearing, we developed, the applicant, the applicant plans to demolish the single existing residence and build twelve single-family homes with two, with attached two-gag garages of twenty-two by twenty-two feet. Units are separated from twenty-two to twenty-seven feet, in the plan plans. However, unit five is behind the other units, so it is separated by forty-one and thirty-three feet from the adjacent units. However, it has a one-hundred-foot driveway, the thing. There's a six-hundred-and-seventy-foot-long, twenty-foot-wide road on each side, ending at a one-hundred-foot-diameter turnaround. There's a gravel school bus waiting area on South Street. There's a group mailbox on South Street for twelve homes. The application says there are forty, forty-eight parking spaces. Now, for the septic area, back of the houses there, there's twelve two-compartment tanks with a total liquid capacity of at least fifteen-hundred gallons with pumping and maintenance access, okay? There are six shared two-house pump stations with maintenance access for the soil absorption systems. There are three shared distribution box systems with maintenance access for the soil absorption systems. There are three soil absorption systems with maintenance access. There are four wellheads. There's one utility room to have individual electric needed service for each well. There are three fire cisterns totaling fifteen thousand gallons with service hydrants and maintenance access in connections to the non-potable well for cisterns. There's a twelve-foot-by-ninety-three-foot gravel access area for the fire cisterns. There's a one-by-thirty-six-foot infiltration area with maintenance access located in the turnaround. But there's also one by, one fifteen-by-thirty-two-foot infiltration area with maintenance access on it. You know, so it's certainly going to provide higher density than the surrounding area, but it's not going to enhance the environment compared to what's there, okay? So, if this is listed on the application, your self-assessment to the state on the thing, is saying that you're meeting that. And I was feeling that during the hearings, we developed that, that's not right.
Did you want to make a comment, Mr. Rhodes?
May I?
Yeah.
As part of the project, we are installing a stormwater management system that was subject to review by the peer reviewer. It's in full compliance with Mass DEP stormwater standards. And one of the features of that system is it actually decreases the runoff from the site. And we've provided calculations for all storm events up to the hundred-year storm, showing that less runoff will be coming off that site. And the runoff that we are collecting is treated. That is a feature that's not on the site now. So, any sediment, any siltation that could go to abutting properties is being retained on-site and properly managed by the state. So that is a benefit to the environment. I know, I appreciate your view on it, but that was under full review by the peer reviewer, and he agreed with the calculations and the methods for the management of it.
So that's enhancing the environment?
As well as tearing down the existing structure, which is, it's a tear-down, so.
And, we'd have to realize at some point, whether it's this development or another one, this, unless the town had voted to buy it, it would not be preserved as recreation. There's value to the property, and it would be subject to some developments. That would be subject to these stormwater standards, and we're incorporating that here.
Yes, but I guess my understanding is that, supposing the town didn't buy it and a developer came along, one that was interested in following the bylaws, you know, the two, two-acre minimum, you could have three houses built there, and I don't think many people will object to that.
So, the threshold for stormwater management would be four houses. So you would have arguably a bigger impact. There'd be no control to the runoff under that development scenario. Whereas under this scenario, we're forced to show those calculations and make sure those environmental protections are in place.
Well, I sort of like the view of the way with, with looks with just one house or two or three houses within that property, but I guess just for the-
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
No, I haven't.
Are you continuing? I'm sorry.
No, 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 but if someone else wants to, we-
I see no one else, so you have the floor, Kevin.
This on the, sort of the completion date here. The selectmen in their June twenty-first letter to the ZBA on the Capes project pointed out, quoting here, "We'd also note that the applicant has a prior-approved forty B project in the works and has held and awarded the lottery to low-income units, yet has not pulled building permits thereby keeping those units off the SHI." By keeping these units off the SHI, has kept the town under the ten percent and/or the percentage required to create a reprieve under the Housing Protection Plan Safe Harbor. We cannot be certain that this was a calculated effort on his part, but whether inadvertent or inadvertent, the, this has had the effect of preventing the town from meeting the ten percent limit, even though it has approved and permitted the forty B project.
If I could speak to that?
Pardon?
Could I speak to that?
I was just quoting the letter.
No, I understand, but even if all of Green Acres was built out, you would still fall, you would, I think you were going to be nine-point-eight-seven percent, which is still not ten percent. And I haven't withheld anything, because I'm only building them as fast as they sell. I don't make any money on the affordables, and I have pulled permits for every, I've been building three-in-one according to the law, I've been doing everything according to the law. There's been no misrepresentation, and even if they were all built, they still wouldn't be at ten percent. And, the other thing is, there's some over at the co-hosts which are being counted on-
No, no, that's fine, but that's on your time. That's not the point, the points that I wanted to make. This was just, I was wanting to quote completely from the letter, okay? "The application for Chapter Forty B Project Eligibility Site Approval Letter for the Mass Housing Finance New England Fund NF-E, NF, Home Ownership Projects, which we were considering for the Capes project, which we still are, states in Section Six, the applicant qualifications, the entity information and certification, in the applicant entity's forty B experience that you listed on the Capes project here, says Green Acres, thirty-two detached homes completed in twenty-seventeen." So, the-
We went over this already at the last meeting. Kristen got in touch with Mike Busby from Mass Housing, and there's no, that was a prediction. These, these projects take time.
I'm still not making my point.
Okay.
Okay. The comprehensive permit for Green Acres was approved for thirty-two units, and we approved it on April twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen. The, this came as a surprise to me that weren't completed, because I'd read it. You know, we're going with that several days. In December, when we had made the other changes there, I thought that was an order to finish and complete the year. No, no, I'm just saying, I, my mistake, I thought that's what it intended.
Yeah.
Okay. So, when questioned on the Capes of Berlin hearing, writing here, the applicant stated, "In three years, he's only been able to complete eight units of Green Acres", and that the twenty-seventeen date was a typographical error, okay? The applicant, the application for the Capes of Berlin Chapter Forty B project is to be approved by the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, okay? And identifies the Marlboro Savings Bank, the federal loan, Federal Home Loan of Boston, and the New England Fund is the financing the five-million-dollar Capes of Berlin project. Therefore, the applicant certifies under pains and penalties of perjury that the information is true and complete. So I was quite surprised when you were saying that, first of all, that it was a typographical error, but then, you didn't want to change it.
The state didn't seem that it was necessary to change the, these projects. After I go through you guys, I still have to go to the Board of Health. You guys still have forty days to draft your permit, and I still have to go back to the state for a final approval, which can take anywhere from sixty days to eight months. So that's where the timing of these things is hard to predict.
You keep responding, but I'm not getting to my, you haven't given me a chance to make my point there, okay? So, for the past two years, you've been, the applicant has appeared as a, at a number of the ZBA hearings to change changes in the comprehensive permit. In December twenty-sixteen, he wanted the ZBA to make significant changes to the lots on the pod. The examples of these, changing Lot One to Lot Eleven, and adding a whole new area that was seven-hundred feet away to Lot Eleven. Changing Lot Two to Lot Twelve, increasing its size and adding another small area from five-hundred feet away to Lot Twelve. Changing Lot Three to Lot Thirteen, increasing its size and adding another area from three-hundred feet away to Lot Thirteen. Changing Lot Four to Lot Fourteen, adding another small area from five-hundred feet away and another much larger area from a thousand feet away, okay? And it continues. These changes were made and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds. The full plan is available online, twenty-one, you can look at it there. It's on Plan Book Nine Twenty-Four, page seven, the thing, okay? The completed eight units are shown, can be seen at Plan Book Nine Twenty-Four, but page ninety-six, okay? So, the thing, the concern of holding the, these units intentionally holding up for you to work on, you know, additional forty B ones, I'm quite concerned with the difficulties that you've had on this project, what's the cost?
I haven't had any difficulties with this project. I had to wait for my approvals, and I continued to build throughout. I have, I have twelve of them occupied and six of them under construction. I have fifty percent of the road in, the other fifty percent of the road's upgraded, the drainage in, the retention ponds in. I'm, I'm working every day on that project. The project has not given me any problems. But I have to have work ahead of me, because it takes so long to get the approvals, that I'm going to have, by the time this thing is approved, I'm going to have a six-month overlap between projects, and that's what requires me to keep busy, to keep my guys busy and keep employed.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for the explanation, I was just saying, my concern is that if you've only completed eight of the thirty-two units within three years on the pod, and the, and the capital flows and things, from my experience in the construction projects, the-
That's because it's two years of approval process. I, I bought this property in August of last year. I waited, I did not jump on it after town meeting. Another developer looked at it and chose not to buy it. I met with the moment-
I didn't want, you know, I was just saying what my concern is with the Green Acres.
All of the time is the permitting process, it's not the building process. We're in a strong market and-
I think one of the things Kevin was addressing was what happened to the septic system at Green Acres.
That ended up, we needed more nitrogen areas, so we took land that we owned and increased the size of the lots, and that was through the Board of Health, and that was a requirement. And then, if you, if you look in, if you look up my comprehensive permit, it says, "I would be bringing you a final plan", which, that's the final plan, which you endorsed and you signed.
Oh, you had no choice at that point?
No, but it was in the permit, it was in the permit, that a final plan will be brought to you guys for your endorsement. And, like Town Council says, there, a lot of this stuff is conceptual at the beginning, and then it's signed and it's endorsed, and it goes to Mass Housing for final approval. That's, that's the way it's done.
Part of what we've done is basically put together the framework that this project can work within. And part of that has been, with your feedback, we've been trying to incorporate more and more aspects of the regular by-right zoning bylaw, so that we can provide increased setbacks to the abutting properties. As Council's pointed out, we have forty-foot backyards on each of these units, which would be by-right if there was a regular single-family home. That wasn't something that was there when we started the process. So we're trying to work with you to spell out what those numbers will be, so that we can reach an agreeable resolution on that. And I, I know you've pointed out many times, Madam Chairman, that each project is different. Same for Mr. Rhodes. He's a capable builder. I know there is a history between your board, but we've been asked not to look back at your past projects for the framework for this. And I think it's only fair that we just treat this one as a new thing. And really, it's a smaller scope than he's done in the past with a site with few constraints of development on it as well.
At the December meeting, I'd asked the engineer, who was talking, was he proud of that plan? He just shrugged, on the thing. And, I'm sort of embarrassed by it. You know, you get these kids at school, you know, they get assignments, go look at these projects, they look at, introduce three blunders, you know, on these blueprints or whatever. And I hate to think of these kids in, in India and China and things, picking up the, the blueprints that we've approved, you know, with Town of Berlin on it, and appearing as, you know, as blunders on it. They, that, those diagrams-
I think you're getting a little off-base, you know? We're here to talk about this current project.
Well, I think that this probably won't happen again, because I think what-
These laws.
Ends up being the will of the, of the committee. But I don't think they would approve anything that doesn't confine you to what's on the plan, and you have to come back if you don't do it. So, which is what we hadn't done in the past. There's someone, Kevin, can I take, interrupt you for a minute?
Oh, I am finished.
I would like to say that I think the point that Kevin made is a very valuable point. This is not looking at a record of, of, let's say, past approval from, the laws have changed. But, looking at the past performance of somebody is very different than looking at laws changing. And I don't think you can say, as this gentleman over here says, "Well, we don't want to look at our past performance, we just want to look at this project." No, you should look at past performance, that has nothing to do with the law. And I'll tell you what, according to what I just heard and what I've heard in prior meetings, there's not a lot of wiggle room here, like, "Well, move three-hundred feet over here and four-hundred feet", I mean, you're putting twelve in no place. So if you have a problem, coming back to you and saying, "Now, what are you going to do?" Well, you're not going to do anything, because it's already done. This is ludicrous in terms of any tolerance. If there's anything wrong at all, it screws everything up. So, Kevin, I'm with you on that.
Thank you.
If I could go grab a water and use the facility, that'd be okay?
Would everyone like to take a five-minute recess? Is that okay? Anyone have an objection? We'll wake everybody up.
Or is that just maybe Seth will-
No.
That email's directly from Kristen.
So, we only have a portion of it, we don't have what she asked Mike, but maybe we do. I'm just, like, just be what Seth gave.
There was an earlier email, Mike was actually on vacation, so he got a, he provided the courtesy of reply before that.
Thanks. This is mine, this has the whole thing. This has the whole thing. Thank you.
Yes, that I have.
And then go bring a light preserver down too.
We're all set?
Uh-huh.
We have been for a while, I know. I just have one comment that I'd like to make. And you've been before me, not many of the folks at the table before. And there is, as you can see, a lot of opposition to various aspects...
Sure.
Of what's going on that we haven't had in the past.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to get that comment in.
Yeah.
Okay. Has everyone who wants to give input had an opportunity to do so? Does the petitioner want us to proceed?
Yes, Ms. Stefan.
So, the only thing that the board can do now is vote to close the public hearing and therefore you can take no further information.
Input.
So, the first question that you would, after you vote to close the public hearing, the first thing that I would ask is if the applicant meets the three requirements. And if the applicant doesn't meet the three requirements, then the application should be denied.
Do you understand what the three requirements are?
And seeing the three requirements, I can't have, I couldn't have such eligibility without the three requirements. And I have that.
You do understand what the concerns are? In other words, do you have a purchase and sale agreement that was sent to the housing authority that would cover us still?
Yes.
We don't have that.
Right.
I can make a phone call.
No, I, I think what we will do is close the hearing requesting those three. Is that what we're doing?
Once the hearing is closed, no information can be accepted.
Okay.
So, if the applicant is willing to go forward, then the board's hands are tied.
You do understand what she's saying?
She's saying that if I close the hearing, you're going to deny, you're going to deny the project.
I didn't, no, I didn't hear that.
Okay, okay.
What I'm hearing is, it appears that we're prepared to close the hearing. I'm asking you if you want us to, is what I'm asking.
Sure.
You made note of that?
Mm-hmm.
In light of the request for three other pieces of information?
Just one.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion by any of the membership unless they have further questions...
Nope.
To close the public hearing on 58 South Street.
Sure, move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll take that as a unanimous vote. The hearing's closed. Now, I think we have to talk about going forward.
So, your options going forward are you can make a decision tonight if you think that the applicant qualifies for a 40B under the regulations. And if meaning does he meet the three requirements. And if not, then the application can be denied. You could then, you could also condition the project. You could condition the project based on the information in front of you. I'm not really sure how you do that without overcoming that first hurdle though. But you could attempt to do that. That also leaves it open for an abutter to appeal the project based on the fact that there is no site, there's no evidence of site control and that the board erred in issuing a decision because there's no evidence of site control. But a decision can be made approving the project with conditions. The conditions are mainly based off of waivers. So, the next hearing, I think, we would go through the waiver requests.
The next meeting?
The next meeting. Go through the waiver requests and see which waivers the board would approve and which waivers the board would deny and fashion a...
What conditions that the board may choose to put on?
Yeah. I always, I always recommend boards start with waivers because the conditions usually come out of which waivers have been approved and which waivers have been denied. When discussing waiver requests, we can also discuss conditions as to whether the board wants to, whether the board wants to approve a waiver request, we can discuss which conditions we want to put on it or things like that. But we could, we could start there. Or the board could go through all of the evidence in front of them and determine that the local, there is a significant local concern that outweighs the need for affordable housing and it could be denied.
Okay. It sounds like to me, I don't want to speak for the rest of you, that we're looking to get together and go over these things again, go through the waivers, go through the plans. We have a timeframe. We have to give something to the petitioner within 40 days, is it?
No, we have to give something to the town clerk.
Within 40 days?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and again, you need some time at the end of that. So, what can we do in the way of another meeting?
Copy one, something fairly soon. Wasn't that you? You're going to have to rewrite it and then we're going to have to do it again.
Correct. We would need at least two.
You still...
Yeah, unless, unless it's a straight-out denial, then that can be written. I would still need two.
Bug alert. What is that?
It's like, oh, squash.
We need his way over there. My notes are on.
Jim, do you have some input that you're...
Well, we have 40 days to have this, to the town clerk, just thinking.
We don't want to wait till our next meeting?
No. Because if she's going to rewrite it and then if there's corrections or things we want to change, then she's going to have to rewrite it and then we're going to have to meet again. So, if we wait 30 days to meet, then only needs...
It's going to be close.
10 days to squeeze everything out again and then we'd have to have another meeting after that.
Next two weeks are impossible, almost next three weeks are impossible for me.
Are they?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any possible day in the next couple of weeks?
Not the next two.
What are the rules about someone not attending maybe one of these, what I'm going to refer to as like a workshop-type thing, workshop meeting?
It would be, it's, it would still be the Mullen rule, so there would be one meeting.
You can miss one meeting?
Mm-hmm.
You haven't missed any meetings, have you?
Uh-uh.
Is there a duo involved here?
The du... Duo, well, we do go to, we're kind of busy next couple of weeks. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
What about the possibility of November 1st?
What day of the week is that? A Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Um... I might have fixed your card.
But that would leave us a full three weeks.
Busy the 5th, the 4th.
When you say two weeks, when is your next availability? And I'm not thinking even in terms of Wednesdays.
Neither was I.
So, when...
Tuesday, no. Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, no. Friday, Saturday, no? No.
So, Tuesday, Friday and Saturday are out any week?
For the next two.
For the next two weeks?
Thursday's gone.
But what about Wednesday?
It might be doable, Wednesday.
Okay, what day...
Not next Wednesday.
Okay.
Can't. Sister's coming in, DC, get a prop.
Okay. She doesn't want to come to a meeting?
No, she doesn't.
She doesn't want a free education?
Nope.
Okay, what, what is the third Wednesday from now?
The first.
The first? I really can't do the first one.
No, that's out.
What about the 25th, which is in two weeks?
What day is that?
That's a Wednesday. It's not next Monday.
I've got the Hunter Trials, I'm, I can't do it. No.
You can't do it either?
I can't.
We've got to start this pairing up members.
We're going to stop these four meetings a month. Monday, the 30th? Ah, that's my, October? No. That's...
October 30th?
Is that your Halloween for the kids, that kid's Halloween?
No, isn't it the 31st?
No, we have the Hunter Trials Sunday and I have to get ready for Tuesday. I can't, I cannot, I'm not available.
And the second?
That's November, right?
Yeah.
What day is that?
Thursday.
That would...
I won't be here.
You won't be here?
I'll be gone Wednesday, the 1st through that week, to the weekend. There's a conference I'm going to.
What about the 6th, November 6th?
Is that a Monday?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. I'm good for that.
Do that, everybody?
How's everybody on Monday, November 6th?
Okay.
Jim?
That counts as a monthly meeting too.
I'm wide open except for Christmas Day.
Ho, ho, ho. Okay. And Denny, you're okay? Kevin? I'm okay for the 6th.
Okay.
What time do we want to get together?
Early, so we can get, none early.
Yeah, totally.
What do you consider early?
6:30, 7:00?
That's not, 6:30 will work.
How does that work for you, Amy?
That's fine.
Kevin? Okay.
Is it 7?
6:30. Ready?
6:30.
You were just hoping.
Doesn't matter, 6:30, 7:00.
So, November 6th at 6:30.
And then if you want to...
Yes.
Is your next meeting on the 15th? Is your next scheduled meeting on November 15th?
For which we had nothing.
We don't have a public hearing, but it is a scheduled meeting.
Yeah, we do have to show up for the 15th.
Okay, so why don't we keep it that day, anyway?
All right, so we have the 6th and the 15th, right?
Jeez.
Why isn't the November meeting on the 8th?
What's the matter?
Why isn't the regular...
Because that's not the third one. Oh, isn't it?
November meeting on the second Wednesday?
Oh, second Wednesday, yeah, I'm sorry, it would be the 8th.
Oh, wow. We can just stay over to the 8th.
Turn the place into a bed and breakfast.
I'm kidding.
And we want to do 6th, oh, wow, we don't want to, we want to do 7 o'clock on the 8th?
But can we do this other meeting on the, our regular, on the 8th?
Yes, that's what we're saying. We're going to do the 6th and the 8th.
Okay.
6th and the 8th, okay.
On the 8th, November?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Which is our regular scheduled meeting.
It's a Monday and a Wednesday.
It usually starts at 7:30.
What time are we starting?
The 8th will be 7:30 or 7?
It usually starts at 7:30, so do we want to change that? That's what's posted right now.
We don't have any scheduled meeting?
There's no public hearing unless something came in tonight.
We, we have to, we're posted...
For 7:30.
For 7:30.
All right, so just leave it then?
We'll leave it at 7:30?
Okay.
We have to be there at 7:30 anyway. I mean, if you want to start at 7, that's cool, but I mean, in case anyone were to come in front of us unscheduled, we have a scheduled meeting for 7:30 on the 8th. But that doesn't mean we can't start earlier. Do folks want to start earlier that night?
You know what, why don't we just call in on the, and see what happens the week, two days...
Well, because we have to post it and it would only be two days in between. We wouldn't be, you know, if we're going to have a difference in time.
Okay. Whatever makes everybody else happy, 7.
All right, let's make it 7.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And we're going to have to be here until at least 8 because we, you know, that's when the regular meeting would be 8:20.
All right.
Does that work for you, Amy?
That's fine. And then what about the 20th of November? Can we schedule a meeting for the 20th just in case it's a Monday night? Because the decision is due on the 21st.
Okay.
It's easier to cancel it than it is to...
Right.
So, we'll do 7 PM?
Yeah.
Okay. We're filling your book up finally.
Or get November off.
So goes November.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so we got November 6th, it's a Monday at 6:30. We got the 8th, which is our regular Wednesday meeting. We're going to post to meet at 7.
Mm-hmm.
And then Monday, the 20th...
To finish, yeah.
At 7 PM.
Okay.
We're not accepting any petitions for site approval until March. Now, we've done all the business we need to do. We did in between the two, right, as far as minutes and all that stuff? Anyone have anything else that they wanted to say before we head out?
Uh-uh.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn this meeting. Second...
How do we know the decision? How will we know?
We don't know yet ourself anyway.
Oh, no, I mean, when you do know, how do we get notified or don't we?
The abutters, there should be envelopes that the petitioner gave for the abutters and they, they should be able to send you a copy of the notice, so you should get it within a day or two.
So, who sends it to us?
Leann will...
I don't have him. I'll have to...
Oh, okay.
Madam Chairwoman, I'm sorry, the 40th day is the 20th. It is not the 21st, I counted wrong. Could we schedule a meeting on the 16th, November 16th, it's a Thursday?
Are you bringing the turkey?
Okay, November 16th, 16th at 7?
What day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday.
Okay. All right, so that's out, Thursday.
I don't have my Bible with me, but I, I, I have to cancel something else because we got to get that done.
That's not given, yes?
We don't want to interfere with Thanksgiving, do we, Kevin?
Yes, so that's the week before Thanksgiving.
When's November 4th?
Okay, so, one more time. We're going to meet November 6th, it's a Monday at 6:30. We're going to meet November 8th at 7 PM, that's our regular meeting night.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to meet Thursday, the 16th at 7 PM.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay, I think I have them, did we already vote to adjourn?
We did, yeah.
Cool, okay.